I'd like to call the October 24, 2018 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when finished. Thank you. Commissioners present tonight are Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Duggan, Commissioner Doan, and myself, Commissioner Bagnall. We will now move smoothly to the reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Good evening, President Bagnall. Holy smokes. My apologies. Old habits are hard to break. Good evening, President Bagnall and members of the Board. We will kick off the CEO's report this evening, as we always do, with a Safety Minute to be presented by Tim Boylan, our IT Director.
This safety moment was really driven by timing and coincidence. I've been trying to get out of some fall chores for quite a while, and when the opportunity to talk about this came up, I decided to focus on this weekend's activity. So it's time for gutter cleaning. And one of the things that I discovered as I was looking into my chore list is the fact that falls and electrocutions from working on a roof are one of the really significant factors that affect professional roofers and folks in the construction industry. Those statistics did not get me out of cleaning the gutters or roof this weekend, so I thought I would share them in the hopes that maybe it helps somebody else get out of a chore. So, some of the key things to consider when you're getting ready to climb up on that mossy, slick roof this weekend is, number one, let somebody know you're going up there. It doesn't help if nobody knows you're up there and you fall off the roof, then you are stuck and nobody's there to save you. The other tips really boil down to two things. Number one, have the right gear ready, and number two, have the right equipment ready. So as you wander around on a slick surface, having protective gear like the right shoes, gloves, and making sure your equipment, like your ladder, is in safe working order is really critical to making sure that you're not going to have an inadvertent slip, fall, or the ladder crashing down. I had some really interesting and funny videos of ladder fails, but I didn't think it would necessarily apply to this situation. The other thing is to really focus on trying to work in the right order. The recommendations from some of the professional groups are to clean out downspouts ahead of time, make sure that you have the right tools for the job, like a gutter scoop, and finally, if all else fails, it's a good time to, or during the summer, it's a good time to invest in gutter guards to avoid this whole process altogether. Best preparation is to plan ahead, do it incrementally, try and keep your roof clear over the course of the year, or in worst case, go for it and get one of those organic green roofs that are nothing but sod. So that is our safety tip for the evening.
Great. Thank you very much, Tim. A couple other items. First of all, just a reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so you'll notice that at least a couple of the management team members are wearing pink this evening, and that's just in recognition of the importance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Also, I learned today that today is Unity Day in celebration of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Now, the reason I mention it is because those are basically core values at TVWD, and so to that end, every day is Unity Day at TVWD. So there you go. A couple of notable items. First of all, an update on the Portland Supply. We received notice that Portland has turned off the Columbia South Shore Well Field last week. This was really the result of recent rain, a reduction in system demands, and anticipated return to more typical fall weather that's allowing Portland to switch over to 100% Bull Run water, and that does cause a slow shift in water quality back to Bull Run since we've been on a blend of Bull Run and groundwater pretty much all summer. But that change over the last week is pretty much complete now, but if folks have questions, certainly that information is available on TVWD's website. Also, last week, Portland informed TVWD that they detected one crypto-sprudium OOC in the Bull Run Supply on Thursday, October 11. This was the first crypto-sprudium OOC that had been detected from the Bull Run watershed since April 10. Portland issued a press release, they updated their website, they continue to make the monitoring data available, and as always, TVWD staff are continuing to monitor the situation. I want to bring to your attention, a couple of weeks ago, on Thursday, October 4, and Saturday, October 6, the district held open houses to discuss the water rate increase that is scheduled to go into effect next month. This was the, this increase was the second year of a two-year rate plan that was recommended by a rate advisory committee two years ago. Since it had been a year since the rate had been proposed, the district wanted to provide outreach and let customers know about the drivers behind the rate increase. I found it fascinating, Thursday evening and a Saturday morning, and we had a total of 32 members of the public show up to these open houses. Staff provided an overview of the district, an update on the Willamette Water Supply Program, and a very thorough update in terms of the financial strategies and financial plan of the district. I found it absolutely fascinating that the customers were thoroughly engaged, they asked thoughtful, insightful questions, they carefully listened for the most part, and actually, it was a very good conversation individually and collectively with these members of the public. To be honest with you, the Thursday night meeting was probably one of the best public meetings I've ever attended. It was truly a pleasure to be there, share the information, be treated with respect and appreciation for what it is that we were doing. All in all, it was a big success. I think nearly all the members of the public left smiling with appreciation for the fact that what we were doing and how we were doing it. So, in particular, I want to thank Andrea Watson and our communications team who had organized this, put it together, made sure that the managers were well-prepared and had good information to deliver in a succinct kind of way. All in all, a home run, and again, it was truly a pleasure to be there and represent the organization in that process. Next on the list is an update on Special District Insurance Services Best Practices. So as you know, every year, TVWD participates in the SDIS Best Practices Assessment. The good news is SDIS no longer requires Board approval of our Best Practices checklist. In the past, we've provided that to you and had you approve it. Now, basically, they just allow staff to complete it, but I think it's such an important process in terms of making sure that the Board's aware of what we do and how we do it, that I've asked Mike Jacobs to come in and provide an update. The bottom line, and so Mike's going to cover this here in just a second, but I wanted to leave you with this thought on this particular item. The SDIS Best Practices Program isn't just a good idea in managing risks, it also helps reduce our costs of insurance. And so, Mike, take it away.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Good evening, Commissioners. So, yeah, as Mark mentioned, each year, Special District Insurance Services provides us with the opportunity to save 10% on our contributions or premiums to the property casualty program. And this year, we will get that 10% again. We've already, how they do that is they give us five areas to work on, and if we meet all those five criteria, then each one of those is worth 2%, so we can save a total of 10% in our contributions. Three of them, we've already done, staff has completed arson awareness training, specifically our building and grounds and distribution staff that keep track of our facilities. We have Board members and staff attend the SDAO Annual Conference and part of that continuous learning effort. Also, the district is a member of the Oregon Association of Water Utilities, which is an affiliated organization to SDAO and SDIS. Staff is in the final stages of putting together a preventative maintenance program that includes checklists, and also, we are finishing up collecting photos of all of our facilities that we schedule so that they will be as part of SDIS database, and those will be completed by the deadline of November 16. So again, we anticipate getting the full 10% savings, which last year saved us approximately $18,000 in premium costs.
Great. Thank you very much, Mike. And then, the department report this evening will be presented by Tim Boylan, again, providing an overview of the IT Department.
And good evening again, Commissioners. It's a really exciting time for IT. We're in the midst of taking a fresh look at our services, how we support the district, and what we can do moving forward. So this evening, I wanted to take a brief moment and give you a little bit of an overview of what our strategic objectives look like, some of the key accomplishments recently, and then a brief look at what we're focused on moving forward. So I wanted to start tonight by touching base briefly on the four cornerstones that we have identified as strategic objectives within IT. These are really focused around maturing how IT services are delivered to the district and its customers. We are trying to simplify the technology stack and the amount of complexity in our environment, both on the backend for IT staff as well as for our customers and constituents. We are trying to drive a higher level of resiliency and risk management, that is safety, security, resiliency, the ability to recover technologies in the case of a disaster. And then, we're also really trying to pivot around to a much higher degree of customer focus. We developed these strategic objectives this last year in conjunction with the team and working with our department customers, and this really finds us at the point in the process where we can start seeing the results of really zeroing in and providing a hard-focused attention to these principles. One of the things I wanted to touch base briefly on is the distribution between operations and projects within IT. Over the past year, I've been keeping track of where staff spend their time and how the requests are coming into IT via our new service desk portal. What I'm finding is roughly 80% of the work that IT does on a day-to-day basis is really around operations. These are things that are tactical, they're mandatory, they recur. These are things like system administration, doing backups of our data, making sure that our network is up and running. It's the bread and butter of making sure IT equipment and software and services are up and running. The remaining 20% of the time is really focused on customer-facing projects. These are things like implementing new reporting, implementing new software features, adding a feature or a function to an existing system. The reason I'm calling this out tonight is that a large percentage of our environment requires a significant amount of care and feeding. As we start working towards more of these critical projects, things like the CIS project, what that does is impact our ability to balance net new projects coming in with the operations. What I'm going to talk about next is a little bit of the key customer successes. These are largely customer-facing things. The overarching objective of IT right now is to try and wrap up most of our projects in flight so we can really focus on the high-priority, high-risk projects, things like the CIS effort, things like some of the IT work related to implementing the Beaverton IGA. And I wanted to keep in mind that balance between the care and feeding, the lights-on support, and the projects. Even with that 20%, I'm very proud that the IT team has been able to accomplish so many great things recently. As I described the last time I came to visit, we implemented an IT service portal called Service Now. This is a helpdesk platform that allows us to take problem requests for customers, manage service requests for things like buying equipment, address problems, manage inventory. It's our cornerstone application that allows us to manage the business of IT. Recently, we've made some changes to that, and I'll show you that in just a moment. We did some really innovative work. We've now implemented some test systems that is essentially a computer on a stick. It looks like a flash drive. I was going to steal it and bring it in here, but essentially, the new technology is going to be used for training systems or assessment centers when we hire new employees. We need to set up a monitor and a computer and have a way for folks to actually get on the network, get on the Internet, use applications. These computers on a stick are a fraction of the price, they're roughly 10% of the price of a full-blown system. We can configure them, we can move them around. It's going to allow us to outfit our training environment for CIS, support our internal needs, and then provide some additional services, things like a kiosk system, all at a fraction of the expected price of maintaining our legacy equipment. We're moving down the path towards virtualization and doing things that are more software-based as opposed to hardware-based. In that vein, we've implemented some new monitoring technologies which have really exposed where we have opportunities to invest in things like our network or wireless environment. We're in the middle of a broad-based security assessment of our SCADA and controls environment. We've completed that, we've identified some go-forward strategies, and we just recently purchased a bunch of new equipment that'll allow us to refresh the infrastructure that controls that entire system. We've also helped with creating a new database for HR to manage job descriptions in support of some of the work they're doing around the Equal Pay Initiative. And then finally, we've done an awful lot of work around our utility billing system, and that's both in support of CIS as well as the Beaverton IGA. These are just projects that we've really been working on in the last 16 to 90 days. This is in addition to the basic care and feeding, and the team has done a fantastic job of stepping up and really providing a level of service that's to be commended. I mentioned the customer self-service portal, and tying back to that foundation of simplification, automation, and customer service, what we've added just recently on the bottom part of that graphic is we've opened up our IT self-service portal to other departments. So recently, we were able to add CityWorks, which lives in Cary's engineering organization, so people can now go submit self-service tickets if they need things related to CityWorks. We added, worked with Andrea and the communications team, so anytime there's a need for a department to leverage the communications function, they can now go directly to the self-service portal and get a request going. And then finally, we recently just opened up facilities. So whether it's a burned-out light bulb or an issue with a faucet, we now have a way to capture those issues, triage those, keep track of what's going on. So not only do the customers get an easy way to submit requests, we also get some visibility into the level of issues or level of work that it takes to manage some of these services. Next up on the list is we're also expanding it into Cary's group for our GIS team. This is a platform that allows us to manage intake and work management across the district, not just within IT, and it's really exciting to see some of the other departments really embrace it and start to make use of a foundational technology. Finally, tonight, I wanted to do a brief look ahead. Over the past year, we've done a bit of a review of the IT master plan, which was originally crafted in 2014 and published in 2015. As we know, technology really doesn't change that much, but we thought it was a good idea to take a fresh look at both the core technologies as well as where some of the industry trends were going. One of the things that came out of both the original master plan and our refreshed look is drawing a line in the sand and creating a new strategy that says, "We are going to move towards a buy-not-build mentality." We have a number of applications and technologies that were developed in-house. Those are starting to get older, they're also starting to get very challenging to maintain, and as we bring in new technologies, maintaining those old ones gets more complex. So the stated philosophy within IT is now buy-don't-build. The other thing in conjunction with that is we're adopting a cloud-first strategy, which means where we can invest in software as a service, or a hosted service, or something that we buy as a packaged product, our preference is to go cloud-first as opposed to hosted onsite. The reason we do that is for supportability, resiliency, and scalability. When we buy a software-as-a-service model, we can scale up and scale down without having to invest in large purchases of equipment, or support, or licenses, or the dynamic that comes with owning your own technology stack. It's very flexible. The supportability comes with a broad range of options from vendors, from third parties. It reduces, excuse me, it reduces the strain of trying to adapt and manage an evolving technology portfolio with limited resources, training dollars, and frankly, time. So we're really taking a fresh look at where it makes sense to invest there and where it doesn't. The strategy, as we move forward, is going to require a handful of things, and these will come to bear as we discuss future projects with the Board. These are new contracts with cloud services vendors, it's going to be a higher level of investment in our connectivity. We need to make sure we have data circuits, Internet connections, a way to access these services that is not going to put the district at risk. If, for example, we put a key application on the web, having a single limited Internet connection will create issues if there's a weather event, a natural disaster, or even, frankly, somebody with a backhoe out on the street that could take us down. So the infrastructure that we need to have in place to move this direction is going to be more robust than we have at present. Finally, it gives us some more options related to security and protections. Commissioner Doan highlighted a recent issue related to physical security of computer hardware. Those issues are very hard for us to deal with and remediate. When we go to a hosted model or we go to a buy versus build, we shift some of the risk and responsibility to the vendors and the hosting partners that come with both contractual obligations as well as a scale and skill set that we just don't have. So we believe strongly that going with a buy-don't-bill and a cloud-first strategy really improves our posture for security, supportability, reliability, and opportunity as we move forward. And with that, I am happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I remember when the IT group was two people in a closet full of wires.
We still have some wires.
Well, I think this looks wonderful. Thank you for the presentation.
Right, thank you.
And I appreciate your looking at the physical security issue that was highlighted in the article I sent you.
Yeah, good. My pleasure.
If it's not clear, the district staff as a whole is extremely enthused with what it is that Tim has been doing. Tim and his team have just completely reinvented how we deliver IT services within the organization. It's an extremely customer-focused, both internal and external customer service delivery model, and truly putting us in a position to be responsive to the concerns of our entire customer base. So it's a really extremely nice piece of work. Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
And if there are no other questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening.
Seeing no other questions, we will move to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. So why don't I start to my left with Commissioner Doan?
Okay, that's great. On the 26th, I participated in a telephone conversation with the rest of the Commissioners concerning some issues that were coming up. On October 2, I attended a work session. On the 8th of October, we had a pre-meeting concerning the JWSC meeting, which came up a little bit later in the year. And on the 9th of October, I had the privilege of sitting in on a webinar that concerned the use of drones for dam inspections and for fixing things after disasters. It was quite enlightening, and I'm not sure we're to that level, but at some point, we may want to do something with that. On October 11, I attended a meeting of the Lowell Business Association, and the person feeded the most at that meeting was Pat Garrett, who's completed his 30 years with the Washington County Sheriff. And the thing I highlighted is when I go to reunions, I grew up in Southern California, but you say that in really tiny letters around here. And I tell people that we have a program here where the sheriff will scoop ice cream for you at Baskin Robbins. And I told them that the elected sheriff of Washington County scooped me a scoop of bubblegum ice cream, and people in the metropolitan area in Southern California are just blown away by the idea that we have a sheriff who interacts with the public at that level. And I think we're very fortunate for that to happen. On the 12th of October, I attended the Joint Water Commission and the Barney Joint Operating Commission. Reservoirs are filling, I guess that's the main thing to say, and things are moving along fairly well. And then, the regular meeting tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Would you like to go next?
Will do. I'm reporting for two months because I was absent at the September regular Board meeting. On September 4, I attended the Board Work Session where we talked about the Willamette Water Supply Project and the water intake facility and long-term goals. On the 7th of September, I had a meeting with Mark Nudson where we talked about long-range personnel planning and discussing other updates. On the 12th of September, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee meeting where we talked about the budget and options for recommendations to the full Regional Water Providers Board. On the 26th, I attended our Board Executive Session that Commissioner Doan attended by telephone, where we talked about long-range personnel issues. On the 2nd of October, I attended the Board Work Session where we talked about our long-term goals, about the update on the PERS system, and modifications to our fees for developers. On the 3rd of October, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting where we did discuss the budget for this next year. It's always been tough at the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board because we usually have an influx of this time of year of newly-elected people that it's their first opportunity to talk about budget, and the way the budget works is that there's always a pretty significant carryover lately. Well, with this past fiscal year, reality is catching up, and we're going to have to have a larger increase in the dues than is normal because we didn't have the carryover that we've traditionally had, and we had some pretty significant discussions on what should be included or not included as we spend as a regional board on conservation message and on the various emergency planning activities. The consensus came down to where we're going to pick kind of a middle-of-the-road approach, modify a few things, change a little emphasis, but basically, even though it's going to be a 9% increase, roughly 9%, 10% area, we're going to be maintaining the status quo, keeping the core programs, while just shifting a little bit on the priorities. On the 4th of October, I attended the open house that our CEO said, I don't want to quote you incorrectly, but it was the best public meeting, open house, that you've intended in a very long time or in your career.
That's correct, yes.
It was a very good meeting, and I was very impressed with the citizens that came and had very, very thoughtful questions, very pertinent questions to how we develop our rates. I'm glad we had our fine staff there and answered some of the questions there that really, if we had junior-level staff people, they would have been stumped. Or if they had just Board members, we would have not known the correct answer. Or if they had just board members, we would have not known the correct answer. So it was a very, very impressive meeting, and I've never saw such thoughtful questions from just our regular, run-of-the-mill, salt-of-the-earth ratepayers. And then I have tonight's meeting to report on, and that's it for the last two months.
Thank you, and moving to Commissioner Sanders.
I've not nearly been as busy. I attended the September 26th meeting as well, which was the special session. The October 2nd session, which was the work session and the PERS discussion, and then tonight's meeting, which is the board meeting.
That was short, but I can slide under that, having been out of the country for most of October. I attended on the 25th of September a final Skype meeting on the branding and logo process, which was fascinating, and you'll be hearing more about that later in this session. The 26th, I attended the special board meeting for succession planning, and then tonight's meeting, the board for district business. Are there any topics that commissioners need to raise that we haven't discussed? Moving to public comment, then. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda or matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. And I do believe that I have one blue sheet from a member of our community that wishes to speak. And I think, Mr. Bodine, you know the rules. You're limited to five minutes. And I do need you to give your name and address for the record. We know you, but not everybody else, right? Your blue light needs to be on.
Thank you.
There you go.
Well, I am Harry Bodine, and I live at 2130 Southwest Burbank Place in Cedar Hills, and I've been a resident of the district since 1964. I come tonight basically to offer maybe some unsolicited advice. Recently, I read in the Washington County Times that the city of Beaverton intends to draw 5 million gallons of water per day through the Willamette Water Supply Line when it's completed in 2026. I found this of interest because a year ago, I attended a series of Beaverton City Council meetings. When the council deliberated a decision to adopt a new urban service area agreement that removed a quarter of the city's residents from the Tuolatin Valley Water District. In those sessions, the council made it very clear that it wanted no part of paying the cost of building the Willamette Supply Line, even though their residents in the Waterhouse, Five Oaks, and smaller neighborhoods would have retained part ownership of the line had the city remained in. And most importantly, in my view, they gave away the water that flows through that, because they had automatically guaranteed as being part of the water district. The council specifically wanted the service area boundary change completed before the district told Sull Bonds to facilitate completion of the line by 2026. So now the city wants to use the water line it refused to pay for. When Beaverton withdrew its residents from TVWD, it took roughly 10% of the water district's territory and operating revenue with it. As I understand it, the Willamette Supply Project will cost about $1.2 billion to build, and TVWD is responsible for 60% of those costs, roughly $720 million. So Beaverton's decision to withdraw service territory revenue base will cost us, quote "remainers," close quote, an additional $72 million that otherwise these people would have paid for if they had remained in the district. We would not face that bill, that increase, had the city not withdrawn the territory. Now the city wants to use the pipeline it refused to help build. I would respectfully suggest to your board that you consider charging Beaverton an extra fee or a capital recovery charge to transport water to its residents through the Willamette Supply Line. The extra fee would be over and above the sums needed to operate and maintain the line and the services and service the bonded debt incurred in building it. I hope you'll consider this by request. I think TVWD residents and businesses deserve having Beaverton repay some of the bill the city walked away from earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodine. And are you going to leave a copy of your remarks?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's all for tonight, folks.
We will now move, I don't have any other comment sheets. Was there someone else that wanted to talk? Okay. We will now move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action, and any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those which do not require discussion. We have four items on tonight's consent agenda. Item A is to approve the September 19th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Item B, approve the October 2nd, 2018 work session minutes. Item C, approve appointments to the Tuolatin Valley Water District's Budget Committee. And item D, adopt resolution number, excuse me, 24-18, approving the chief executive officer agreement between Mark Nudson and the Tuolatin Valley Water District. Excuse me a moment. Sorry, I have been suffering from a travel bug. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We will now move to a public hearing in which we are going to consider adopting ordinance number 02-18, amending the district's rules and regulations to classify duplex customers as Class Code 2, which is residential multifamily. And we would also revise Class Code 1 residential to exclude two dwelling units. May I have a staff report, please?
So any interaction I provided would simply steal Mr. Matthews' thunder, so I'll just simply turn it over to Paul Matthews.
Well, thank you, Mark. Good evening, President Bagnall Commissioners. Tonight is the culmination of the steps that are required to reclassify the duplex customers, that's customers with two dwelling units and served by one water meter, from the single-family class to the multifamily class. And actually, we're honored tonight to have the citizen who brought this to our attention, Mr. Burns, is here with us tonight. He also participated in the rate advisory committee. So thank you to Mr. Burns for bringing this to our attention, and this does culminate those actions. A little bit of history first. Actually, back in March of 2016, Mr. Burns did come to the board and brought to the attention of the district that there was an inequity in the way that duplex customers were being treated. And that's in how the rates are set and the block thresholds. And I'll talk more about that a bit later. After his testimony, we brought this issue to the rate advisory committee to be reviewed. We knew that there would be some customers who might have an increase in the rates. We wanted to make sure they had a robust process, a public process in which to evaluate this, and Mr. Burns did participate in that as well. Staff identified, then took time to identify the customers that were single-family residential customers that actually are duplexes. Within our billing system, they're identified as single-family customers. We had to make sure that we had the list of those customers who were, in fact, duplex customers. We analyzed their bills to see what kind of an impact it would have on the customers as well as on the district. We presented the findings to you at the September work session, and now we're here tonight to revise the district's rules and regulations that actually provide the definition, as President Bagnall mentioned. So a quick overview of the issues. Currently, the duplex customers are classified, they're grouped together with single-family residential customers. That's important because those customers are charged, they're allowed 28 CCF over a two-month period, or 14 CCF, 100 cubic feet of water, over a one-month period, at the Block 1 rate, the lower block rate. Water above that, then, goes to the Block 2 rate. Triplex customers and larger are classified as multifamily residential customers. For those customers, their block threshold is based on 140% of their average water consumption over a 12-month period. So you have customers that are three units and larger treated one way, customers that are two units treated as if they're single-family customers. The concern there is that those two families living in a duplex customer would, just by nature of being larger, potentially use more water and be treated differently. When we did our analysis, a few things came from the details we looked at. First of all, 25%, if we do make this change, 25% of the duplex customer bills would actually go down. I say their customer bills. There could be some duplex customers who bills go down. Those same customers could have bills that stay the same, and they could actually have a bill that goes up. But looking at all the bills that are issued to the customers, about 25% of them would actually see a bill go down. 6% of the bills would, 6% of the bills would go up, and those would probably be for those customers, those duplex customers, that had vacancies over a period of time, and so 140% of a lower number would provide them a smaller block threshold. But 69% of the customers would be, 69% of the customer bills would remain unchanged. I keep coming back to customer bills. Again, customers may be in one of these three buckets or all of the three buckets. To the district, it would have an estimated annual impact of about $12,000 to $15,000 per year. We looked at the distribution of the bills that are presented here. As you can see, by and large, most of the customers would have no impact on their bills. Very few customers would have an increase, and as we said, about 25% of those bills would actually have a reduction. The mechanism that would cause that is, as I mentioned, the Block 1 and Block 2 thresholds. So in the existing rates, when we looked over a four-year period, looked at those customers that are duplex, and actually ran their bills as if they were both within the single-family class and multifamily class, there'd be reallocation of their Block 2, their Block 2 consumption. So existing about 178,000, 179,000 CCF would be within Block 2. About 35,000 would be in Block, I'm sorry, 179,000 be in Block 1, 35,000 be in Block 2. After the change, it would be about 203,000 in Block 1, and only 10,000 in Block 2. And that gets to the issue, the equity question that was brought to the district's attention. Similarly, we looked at the revenue, and that's, again, not a large impact on the district's finances. We had to come up with a definition to be clear as to which customers would be treated as duplex customers. And there are three parts to the definition. First, they have to be residential customers. Otherwise, they would already be treated in the same fashion if they're other than residential. They would have to be billed as duplex customer on the wastewater bill. So if they're not duplex customer on the wastewater bill, then they wouldn't be eligible for this classification either. And they'd need to be served by a common water meter, and these are what duplex customers So to identify these customers, we worked with Clean Water Services, the city of Beaverton, and the city of Tigerden Hillsborough to identify those customers that had sewer bills that were both duplex but single-family bills on the water side. And again, this presents the impacts that we talked about just a moment ago. Customer communication strategies were multiple. First, we did have the rate advisory committee process, as I mentioned before. But as we zeroed in on this solution, we developed talking points for the customer service staff, were able to field calls from customers. We placed a proposal, as well as our analysis, on the district's website. We mailed letters to the duplex customers, duplex owners, which outlined the proposal and provided an opportunity for them to provide feedback, and in fact, to attend this meeting in person to give their own testimony. We set up an email notification system for duplex customers who wanted to receive follow-up information, and if approved tonight, we'll actually do another mailing to those customers, letting them know the official action that the board has taken. To date, there have been just a handful of phone calls, and there have been no concerns raised by customers. I think it's fair to say that the proposal has the support of the duplex customers. So our requested action tonight actually is to adopt ordinance 02-18. We're doing this as an emergency ordinance so that it can be enacted by the November 1st deadline that we would like to see. Need to conduct the public hearing we're doing now, change the class definition. I presented it here in red-line strikeout format, as you can see. In the rules and regulations, the customer connection serving a dwelling unit, where a district meter serves only one dwelling unit, will be Class 1, single-family residential. Class 2, the multifamily class, will be changed to be customer connection serving two or more dwelling units. So they're very minor changes in the rules and regulations, but they have an impact on the customers. We also ask that the revisions and definitions be effective on the first full bill issued after the ordinance's effective date to assist with transition these customers to the new classification. With that, available to answer any questions that you might have.
I just had one question. As I was reading the proposed change, there has been a real push in the metropolitan area to try and get accessory dwellings, or granny flats, or any other name, that is kind of different than your typical duplex. If it ends up being real popular, you might have a lot of questions about new dwellings coming in, and maybe they want to have a separate plumbing connection, so it probably wouldn't be an issue because they'd have a separate meter. Do you think that this will create any issues with staff long-term if the trend continues to try to have additional dwelling units on traditional single-family lots?
We actually discussed this quite a bit, the granny flats and the additional dwelling units. That's one reason that we tied the definition back to their sewer bill, too. So if you're going to be a single-family residential customer for sewer, then you're going to be one for water. So that's one aspect of this. But if we see an increase in customers who are, in fact, duplex customers, it's probably a good thing for the district because it'll allow us to provide the same service, with more service with the same amount of infrastructure, and actually reduce our cost. I don't think it'll be an undue burden on the district. If customers come in and do these things, they'll need to certify that they are, in fact, paying the sewer bill, that they are duplex customer, and then they can be treated as a multifamily residential unit. We were concerned about customers who have high water use. We have folks that have large gardens and land use. This isn't really for them. This is for those customers that do have the additional dwelling units, really are two separate dwelling units served by one water meter. So I think we're in good shape in that regard.
I really like the clarity this gives between the water and the treatment of those dwellings under the water and wastewater rules. Are there other questions? Then do I have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance amending the district's rules and regulations to classify duplex customers as Class Code 2 residential multifamily and revise Class Code 1 residential to exclude two dwelling units?
Before you act, don't you actually need to do a public hearing on this?
Not according to my script. It comes later.
After, okay, sorry.
So do I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. I'd like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
Ordinance number 02-18, an ordinance amending the district's rules and regulations to classify duplex customers as Class Code 2 residential multifamily and revise Class Code 1 residential to exclude two dwelling units.
I am opening the public hearing on item 2A. Is there anyone who wishes to comment, Mr. Burns? That's a good comment. And you stayed well within your time. So, hearing no other commentary, I will close the public hearing. And do I have another motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 02-18, amending the district's rules and regulations to classify duplex customers as Class Code 2 residential multifamily and revise Class Code 1 residential to exclude two dwelling units?
I motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Turning to the business agenda, item A on the business agenda is consider adopting resolution number 25-18, adopting and amending service charges for development plan review and development services within the Tuolatin Valley Water District.
So as you know, over the last two months, the last two board work sessions, we've presented issues and concerns and questions related to the potential for adjusting the fees for plan review and development services and construction inspection to bring them in line with basically our cost of service. Carrie Pack, our chief engineer, is here this evening to present specific proposals.
Good evening, commissioners. Carrie Pack, chief engineer. I am here to cover the development services fees today and just give you a brief overview of where we've been and where, the direction that we like to move forward with. So just as a quick background, as CEO Newton mentioned, we've been here a couple of times already to talk about this specific issue. Java needs to be updated. First, on September 4th, we came to the board work session to talk about some of the cost of services of doing work on behalf of the private development community that brings vast majority of our public infrastructure as part of their development projects. We, since then, we've gone to the developers with a proposal on the increases and adjustments to the current fees that we have. We've conducted one open house and while it was not very well attended, it was attended by a representative from the largest development community association, the Home Builders of Association of Portland. And they've been extremely good to work with in terms of implementation of the proposed fees that we're bringing to your board today. Since the open house, we have adjusted our recommendations slightly based on their feedback and brought back to you on October 2nd during the work session again to review those changes that we had made. And tonight's proposed, tonight's meeting is to propose the changes and request an adoption of the changes that we have, we're proposing. So as a, again, just to go over what the fees are aimed to address, as part of the development programs or projects that we implement on behalf of the, the private development community in the district, we have to review their set of plans that they bring to the district and we need to review them so that they follow the district's design stand, designing construction standards. So that when they're done with their projects, our customers have infrastructure that we can properly maintain as well as to be able to use to deliver quality water. Over the years in the past, we've been recovering about 41 percent of the plan review fees associated or costs associated with the work that we do on behalf of those, those development projects and none of the inspection fees were collected. So the inspection costs typically require our inspectors to visit the project sites multiple times depending on the size of the projects. Sometimes they're more complex than others, but they do require for us to go out and inspect the site as well as to provide pressure testing to make sure that the system is, is going to hold water as well as quality test to make sure that the water being flown into the new system is properly treated and has appropriate coordination associated with that. In addition, we also provide fire flow testing on new development projects there so that as the new systems or subdivisions are coming to place that they have sufficient fire flow associated with fighting fires. This is the current development process that we follow. First, request for service provider letter is received by our staff. And when that happens, we set up our, our paperwork in terms of following with the project number. They do, the developers do submit a payment fee, which right now is just associated with the plan review activity itself. We provide plan reviews. Sometimes it takes once. There are very few perfect plans that come through, but most of them can get approved within two or three resubmittals. So there are not very many perfect plan reviews and there are also very few that go over more than I would say half dozen times. When it gets to that many reviews, we actually call the consultant in to talk with us to make sure that we understand why things are taking so long because it's pretty atypical for us to go beyond four resubmittals or four reviews. And that's a critical number because that's the base, that four reviews are based on the assumptions that we've placed in terms of how much dollars we're going to be collecting from the development community. Once the plans are reviewed, the construction inspection or the plans are approved for construction and the inspection takes place, even before inspections or construction starts, we put all of these assets in our GIS system so that we know what's being planned to be constructed. So when other projects come along, we have some foreknowledge of what we are expecting to see so that we don't accidentally approve something else on top of already approved plans causing potential conflict in the future. So we do a lot of work even before anything happens out in the ground, out in the field. And again, we have fire, other services like fire flow testing and meter installation and so on. The performance bond that is noted up there on the middle bottom box is only implemented if there are activities that or tasks that the development community has not completed. The project hasn't, still has a punch list item that needs to be completed, but they want to move forward with purchasing meters and having them, having the homes go on. There were, there are very few times when we actually collect performance bonds, mostly because our community, construction community, development community is very good at finishing up what they are required to do. So we don't actually collect performance bond unless we actually need them. So that's something that's a little bit different about us than other agencies throughout the Washington County. And, you know, in a perfect project, the final approval letter is issued and aspils are collected and nothing else needs to be done other than to deliver the services. So when we came to, to your board back in September 4th, we had engaged FCSG group, FCS group study. G used to be part of that letter. They rebranded. They used to be called FCSG when I knew them. And we engaged them to help us figure out what the appropriate costs ought to be for cost recovery associated with the work that we do. And we worked with them to identify how many times do we actually review plans? How long does it take to do a typical plan review? How long does it take to do construction inspection and so on down the line, depending on how big the size of the projects are? They analyzed our, our numbers and they came up with a set of numbers based on some philosophy that we worked with them on. And these are actually some philosophies that you shared with us as well. You wanted to see some equity in the, in the groups of rate payers. So you wanted to make sure that the growth paid for itself as the work was continuing on. Also, to keep things simple, you know, we didn't want to have such a huge bureaucracy created that the cost of doing business was exceeding the, you know, the general assumption of getting the efficient plans reviewed and construction progressing. And you also wanted to make sure that we were on par with the, our, our neighboring communities and that our costs weren't so over the top that we were going to somehow discourage economic development in the area. We took all of those to heart and came up with FCS group's findings that looked at collecting fees that are more appropriate with the actual work that we do. So what you see is plan review fees increasing by approximately about 40 percent, I think. And inspection fees are significantly higher because we collect none of it right now. So these are significant number changes, increases, if you just look at the number itself. But I would like to argue that we bring incredible value to the community, both to development as well as our TVWD community. I feel very comfortable with all the outreach that we've conducted. We've been working very closely with HBA, as I have mentioned, through emails and phone calls. Multiple stakeholders were, sent an email, a mailer direct with the notification of what we were working on. We received one feedback from the website, which we aren't really sure was intended for this particular comment. It was someone indicating that the rates were too high and they didn't want this to be approved. And I think perhaps that person wasn't completely...
That does indicate some level of confusion.
Yeah.
Because by not charging for inspection fees, those costs don't go away.
Right.
And that means they're just being picked up by rates.
Right. So, but another, the city of Beaverton provided feedback to asking us to really try to do a better comparison between our estimates and their estimates. And I've worked with the Beaverton Public Works Director and we think we're in a place where we can, we're looking at apples to apple scenario. Again, we've been talking extensively with HBA representatives about how to implement these new costs. This is the same chart that I showed you just a minute ago, except with the, on the second and the, if you go clockwise, the second at 12 o'clock, right in the middle, there is where we are implementing the plan review fee collection. And then again, at about, I don't know, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, there's the payment of inspection fees. And we've separated the collection of these two fees, even though they're being paid by the same applicant, for the following reasons. Sometimes there is a gap in between when you actually get your plans and when you actually start your construction. Sometimes that gap is long. We've had projects that are 12 months out before we have to, this doesn't happen right now, but there have been times when the approved plans don't ever get picked up. So we don't really want to charge the inspection fees until it's necessary because then we have to find a way to refund the fees and there's more bureaucracy that's associated with looking for folks that should be getting the, the fees that we're not using. So we've decided that it's most appropriate to collect the fees when we need the fees. So those are the two changes that, that we're proposing. And the, I talked about the performance bond admin fee. If I go back just real quickly, the admin fees are listed down here where presently we don't collect any administrative fee associated with collecting and exercising the bonds. And, and as I mentioned, we don't actually collect bonds unless it's absolutely necessary. So we think it's appropriate for us to charge the fee for associated with that work that, that we do. And additional sampling fees and reinspection fees and resubmittal fees have all been discussed with the home builders of, of HBA representative and they're in line with their understanding of what we will be doing. Additional sampling fee is going to be assessed if your samples don't pass the first round. So we typically take a sample, wait for the results to come back, and then if it's, if it passes, we take another sample just as a standard practice. Two samples have to be passed before we can call it good. At any point in time, if it doesn't pass, we're going to be assessing re-sampling fee. This has happened in, at least in one case, where there were eight rounds of samples that had to be taken before we can actually assure that the water was appropriate to drink. So we also feel that this fee is very appropriate. Resubmittal fees is the gap that I mentioned. If, once the plans are approved and it takes longer than six months for the developer to actually go into construction, we're requesting a resubmittal plan fee to be assessed. And that's because there could have been changes to the, to the site, could have been changes to the design standards, many changes. We just want to make sure it's not significant. It's 100 and, $120. So insignificant amount, but something that is going to allow us to make sure that we're recovering our cost. And we're going to let you have total of four iteration in plan review. So I mentioned, you know, our typical plans are completed within two to three and four is probably on the upper end. So we're kind of waging that if you're beyond four recent plan reviews, cycles of reviews, you've got serious problems with your plans. And we're hoping that we're not going to be having, having to do that very often. Reinspection fee applies when, when you call us in to final punch list and you're not ready for whatever reason. Our staff had to go out there and our time is not free. So we're going to be assessing reinspection fees. Again, these were all vetted with the stakeholders and they were on board with all of them. This is one part that the, based on some feedback from our stakeholders, we're recommending. Originally during the work session, we recommended that the plan review fees be implemented effective as of February, or November 1st, so a couple of weeks, next week. And the inspection fees follow February 1st, 2019 effective date. They have requested that both of those fees be implemented at the same time in February 1st. And I think it gives them, that's about six months from the first time we started discussing these fee adjustments. And I think it gives them a plenty of time to actually work with the projects that they have already in, in pipeline. So I think that's a reasonable request and staff is recommending that we make the, the implementation of both of these fees be effective as of February 1st of 2019. So before I do my last slide, are there any questions that you have?
I would just like to comment that I really appreciate the fact that we're now getting so that everybody is paying for the work that the district is doing based on what they're asking us to do, that nobody's getting a free ride anymore. And I really appreciate the fact that you took this on. And I think it helps everybody, every rate payer to keep the rates low, to make people pay for the services that they're getting and not get a free ride on somebody else. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And as much as I would like to see us get to that full cost recovery basis sooner rather than later, I, I do agree with, with staff that delaying the plan review fees to start the increase to start on February 1 with the inspection fees is, that's not an undue burden on us and it helps out the Home Builders Association. So fine with that.
Thank you. So without additional questions, staff is recommending that you adopt resolution 25-18, amending service charges for plan review, development plan review and development services effective February 1st, 2019.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 25-18, adopting and amending service charges for development plan review and development services within Tuolatin Valley Water District?
I motion. And I'll provide the second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes with the effective date of February 1st, 2019. Moving to the next business item, we should consider adopting resolution number 26-18, declaring public necessity to acquire a well, equipment, attendant water right and temporary access easement on and under the real property known as 1S225BD Tax Lot 01105, Willamette Meridian, Washington County, Oregon.
So as...
It flows off the tongue.
Yeah. As you know, over the last several years...
As you know, over the last several years, the district has invested, frankly, several million dollars in planning, designing, constructing the Miller Hill Aquifer Storage and Recovery Facility. Recently, it's become apparent that we need to take some additional action to acquire a right to take care of a neighboring well. And so Clark Balfour will describe this evening why that is and how we might go about doing that.
Okay. Thank you, President Bagnell, Commissioners. As, as Mark said, the, the district has invested very significantly in a aquifer storage and recovery well on a piece of property to the south. And I could go through the same map and tax lot and section number, township range, but it would stay that we own tax lot 1106 and the other property is tax lot 1105, just to the north of us. In, in trying to get our well commission started up, there were, we found the introduction, there had been contaminants introduced that we have to take care of. And we've identified the potential source of those as the, a well, an abandoned, unused well on this property to the north. So in order for us to engage in meaningful negotiations with the property owner, we need to adopt this resolution, try to value what that well and what those water rights would be, and then to negotiate with the owner to acquire rights to disinfect that well so that we can preserve our own, and then also to decommission that well so that it can't continue to be a source for introduction of contaminants. And so we'd ask you to adopt this resolution of need, which gives the condemnation power if we need to use it, and authorize us to proceed and to value, to negotiate, and if necessary, and negotiations break down, then to commence an action to acquire the well as we would with any other property. Now, the, the key here is that we are not acquiring a permanent interest in land, we're acquiring the well, the right to disinfect the water and decommission that well, and then to leave. And that would leave the, the rest of the property intact for the owner. So with that, we'd ask that you approve Resolution 26-18. Questions?
I move approval of Resolution 25-18.
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes and I thank everyone for not making me read out that tax lot information. Okay. Thank you. Moving to Item C on the business agenda, we are going to consider approving the Toowleton Valley Water District logo as recommended by the branding committee.
So over the last several months, as you know, our communication team has been working with the branding committee, as well as staff and many local graphics artists to develop proposals and options for an updated district logo. And Andrea Watson is here this evening to provide a specific recommendation for your consideration.
Appreciate your time and attention to the commissioners who've received a couple of updates about this, but we're hoping to bring it to a conclusion tonight by kind of giving you a summary of where we've been and what we're recommending. So the district started this process with Stanton Global Communications back in 2017 and they did a pretty robust process. We, we recognize that the main thing that we need to do here is communicate the value of water. We need to communicate the people-centric version of it. We need to move ourselves forward in terms of our mission, our vision, our values, but also our role in becoming a regional water supplier as opposed to a distributor. We also wanted to have goals, as we have in the communications program, to get lots of feedback, get engagement from a variety of sources, and determine a pathway forward with budget sensitivity. So we did get quite a lot of feedback around this topic, but we were aware of it going into the project as well. So I'm hoping we've done enough work here to allow you guys to make a decision, one way or the other, with the finalists that we came up with. We did get multiple sources of feedback all along in the process. The committee met a number of times. We worked with a number of designers. We had over 350 submissions. We did a lot of back and forth to get those refined. And then I came to you at the last meeting and asked permission to do customer polling. So we have a variety of inputs into the choices. We had our committee members who really helped us go through the scope of what Stanton came up with. They identified the criteria, that what we were looking for in the change, which was versatility of shape, a versatility of uses, attractive in color, attractive in black and white. Again, that was a cost sensitivity thing. And just knowing how our business works, sometimes you need to make a copy of something and so it's going to appear in black and white. And also wanting to make sure that we bring forward the water element and reinforce the humanity in the drinking water portion of our business. So you can see here kind of a visual representation in the point scoring logo number six, and I did put them back here, the boards, in order. As you would read right to left, those are the order that they were ranked, basically in all three of our data processes. So we, logo six, average score of 93. Logo number two, which was the second place one, averaged 80. And then logo number three ranked 77 on points. But we also looked at sort of an ordinal system. How many times was this logo ranked number one? And logo number six, the blue on the first bar, that's how many times people liked it as its first choice. And then the logo number three is the sort of lighter purple and then the darker color is how many times logo number two was ranked number one. The second bar there is how many times the logos were ranked number two. So again, you still see the number six getting some votes. Number six received no votes, ranked as number three. So everybody who ranked it ranked it one or two. And the, you know, it kind of stacks out again where logo number two finished basically second overall and logo number three, third. We also showed you this the last time. This was a poll of our staff. We had 337 votes and we had them go through all seven logos that we started with as finalists and do the same type of thing, just rank them one, two, three through seven. And again, number six became the most favorite. And that's right here in this column. And number two was our second most favorite and then number three of the finalists was the third least favorite. So we did go out, and I do want to acknowledge, we did receive, when we went out to the public, I mean, first off, I would just point out, we did the timing of this just after we mailed the 66,000 postcards, letting our customers know they were going to be experiencing a good rate increase. So right around that time when they were going to be hyper aware. It's also right after their largest bills of the season typically hit. And so we did get immediately on those social media posts about 27 comments. And I dropped a red notebook up there. We printed them all out. We went through them. We highlighted the significant things that people had to say. In those 27 comments, they definitely leaned quite negative. It was a lot on cost. We did have a few people who stepped up, I think there were three or four, who said, "Come on, this is our water people. They do a great job." You know, "This is part of business. We have to have a new logo now and then," which we haven't had a new logo in quite a while. So the very last board there kind of shows the history from the beginning through the mergers, the different logos we've had. And essentially, we've had one and then we had a second one with lots of variations through the years. And that's important to us. We want to have an identity and also be able to be very adaptable. So that's one of the things the committees did with all three of these designs, is they really pushed them forward to say, "Okay, we like that, but show us what it looks like round. Show us what it looks like horizontal. Show us what it could, it could look like in different applications." So we have seen quite a few iterations of that. In this polling process, the same process where the 27 people made some negative comments, which pretty much anyone in the community could see, it also spurred quite a bit of engagement. So we had 496 people go and actually give the rating in the poll. And you can see each one of them did get quite a bit of engagement. So we had 416, 375, and 370. So you just get a bigger end because some people ranked all three. And then they gave it a star rating. And then also in that notebook, there's 63 pages of printed out comments. So people didn't just do the star and get out of there. They actually were very thoughtful in the comments that they made about each of these logos. And they raised a lot of other issues that we've continued to hear from the very beginning all the way through the process. Things about color, whether it's bright enough, differentiated enough, maybe it's going to be too expensive because the way, especially this third one, with the way it's, it's a bleed, so that can be, a lot of people pointed this out, like, "That's going to be hard to achieve." There also was a lot of comments about shape of these drops, some of them, and you'll see in the highlighting that we did when we did the review of the comments, this is on a spectrum. So for every person who loves something, you know, two comments later, they'll tell you how much they don't like the exact same element. So we're going to have differing opinions on the topic, but those are all things that we intend to address as we move forward. We will need to play with color. We will need to play with some of this white space in here, depending on the application. Because if you try to stitch this, there's just a very fine line there and that's going to be very difficult for us to get a very crisp result. So again, just trying to point out that although we did get some negative input, we also got a lot of constructive input. And using these tools can be scary and we can, you know, make things personal if we want, but the truth is, we get a lot of engagement because it's very convenient for people. They can do this relatively quickly. And again, just pointing out, we basically got the same overall outcomes. Logo number six, people really like it. Very few people don't like it. Logo number two, it's more split. Still more people like it, but very few don't like it. And then number three is kind of what we call the most divisive of the three, of the three choices. And people either sort of love it or hate it. There's not a lot of in-between. So just getting to the recommendations, we are recommending that we adopt logo number six. It doesn't really matter how we score these or rate them. That keeps coming up as the favorite and we think that's the best one to go forward. We believe we should purchase both the square and the round versions because again, we tend to hold on to these things for 20 or more years and we would want to have variety and not have to have that design service done for us again. We also plan to come up with a very responsive implementation plan. We heard the people who are worried about cost, we're aware of the cost, we're aware of all the fees that are going up for a variety of things and we want to be sensitive to that. We did state that in our poll that we plan to use up the existing resources that we have. We're not going to throw stuff away just because it has an old logo. We want to stick within our departmental and normal operational expenditures and timelines to replace things such as uniforms, markings on vehicles. And then we also want to develop an implementation plan that has budget sensitivity but does get us to the finish line, at least on the customer-facing things by 2021. So we'd have the remainder of this biennium and any budgets that we have, and then we would have the following biennium to finish up that work and focusing again on the customer-facing things. So the vinyl on vehicles, our main headquarters signage, you know, the lobby, things where people walk in and we want to start having continuity in the new image. So that's pretty much what I have for you. Obviously, anytime anybody wants to ask any questions or we can clarify anything and definitely thank Commissioner Bagnell for serving on the committee.
I've got a couple of questions. I've never seen the round version. What does the round version of this look like? That one?
All three of these are round.
Which one?
Six.
Okay, that I see. Which of the three on the bottom? Or is it all three of the three?
Six.
As far as implementation going, we're not that specific on which of these three. It just, we wanted to see what it would look like if later on we wanted to do a seal version or an anniversary version. On all of the finalists, we have different shapes and different, you know, configurations so we could get a picture in our own heads, will this work in a round application? So the one, for number six, our recommendation is we would roll it out as the square, the thing that looks like a drinking glass.
Sure.
But we know that we would have possibilities to adapt that into a round format in the future if we wanted to.
Okay. Does the square include the writing? The Toowleton Valley Water District?
It does.
Or is it just the square?
No, it would include the writing. Because until people are really familiar with the image, that wouldn't stand alone that they would know who we are. So in the comments, that's a lot of the tweaking on this one, I believe we need to do, is the feedback people had is it's hard to read, how come Water District are smaller, you know? So we will need to play around with some of these elements, just like we need to play around with the color elements and the white spacing elements on this one, to get the final version that we would actually implement.
Okay. So basically what you're asking for is approval of the concept?
Yes.
Okay. As you probably know, I'm colorblind. And I don't see colors unless I think about it. And I'd really like to have this, more saturated, or glossy. That would help me see it. But as far as the concept goes, I'm fine with it.
Okay. And we would work with you individually to help us refine that?
Don't, don't work with me individually.
Okay.
But, you know, I'd like to have it glossier. I don't want this hanging on me.
And some of it, though, is the way that we're printing it right now. You know, we're just putting it on the plot and it's very flat.
Sure.
And we're doing really, you know, high-speed, low-cost applications because, you know, we don't own it yet.
Okay. Well, that, that all fine. That's all fine. I like the concept. I like the way it works. You know, I tweak it, but then I tweak it until the day I die. I mean, you know, nothing's ever done like this. So, you know, freeze it at some point and just run with it. But anyway, yeah, if you could, if you could take the saturation issue into account, I'd really appreciate that.
That's why we had so very many meetings on the branding, is people could tweak things and tweak things and tweak things. And sometimes we tweaked ourselves right out of liking a design entirely. It's like, "Oh, no, we've ruined it." That was pretty funny. Are there other questions or comments?
Yeah. I'd like to thank the citizen ratepayers, my fellow citizens, because several hundred people commented, many positively, as your folder shows, they took a moment to really provide you with some excellent feedback.
And I'd also really like to acknowledge, a lot of these folks were professionals. I mean, we had people who, "I'm a branding expert. I'm a graphic designer." And then we did include our PIO network throughout the region, and so a lot of those names may be familiar to you, but we did that on purpose because we knew, they have a distinct eye for these kind of things and they have to make these decisions. So if we can get them involved in helping us, then they get a little bit of cover when they need to make the same decisions, because it is a big decision. So we did get, you know, we tried to really pay attention to that when we had professionals and so all those comments were highlighted. And there was real consensus amongst those folks, too, that this first one, number six, is the better option of the three.
And I really appreciated the customer comments, too, many of them. I was surprised, thank you for highlighting them. I was surprised to see how many times people would respond to someone who was obviously just doing a knee jerk, "You're just making my rates go up." And someone else would answer them and say, "Didn't you read the rest? They're going to use up all the existing, this is not going to be expensive."
And we really do monitor that. So the night that we launched that, we were paying attention and watching, and we will get involved if we need to. But in this particular case, we felt it was better to let it play out. But a lot of other issues were raised in those comments that we're going to turn into a feature on Nextdoor that's sort of like the question of the week. And we're going to turn those comments back into questions and actually give people answers to their questions. You know, some of the things that they raise, we've heard before. But I don't think we've really been very systematic about re, you know, using those questions down the road when it's maybe not as hot of a topic to re-educate the whole community on why water is more expensive here than, say, in Arizona or Denver, or some of the places that customers specifically mention because they've lived there. And I think so it's an opportunity for us down the road to help bring everyone's water education up, to understand, you know, that we're playing with a different set of rules here and that does affect their rates.
I take it you're looking for a motion?
Yes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the Toowleton Valley Water District logo as recommended by the branding committee?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you again for moving this particular task to a conclusion.
Thank you. That was a really interesting process. We now move to item number- We now move to item number four on the agenda, which is an informational presentation on the board and budget committee schedule for the 2019-21 budget process.
Well, I'm thrilled to announce that we are moving into budget season. Oh, boy. So Todd Burton, the district's budget officer, is here this evening to provide just an overview of what the budget process was, will be for development of the 2019 to 21 biennial budget. Take it away, Todd.
Thank you, thank you, Mark and President Bagnell. Todd Burton, district budget officer. I just have a couple of items to cover, and this is, these are information items only, we don't need any action by the, by the board. One is to discuss the proposed budget schedule, particularly the budget, public budget phases, which include the budget committee, which includes the five members of the Board of Commissioners as well as the five citizen members. Thank you for adopting consent item 1C, which seats our budget committee for the next budget cycle, and we will welcome our new member, Carl Fisher, to the budget committee. Just wanted to review the, some key dates as well as get some feedback from the board. In the past, we, before we've started anything in a formal way, we've offered a tour to the budget committee. Last year, for example, we visited the Ridgewood View Park Reservoir and recreational facilities. After seeing it under construction, they saw it in a finished version. We toured the pipeline route for the Willamette Water Supply System, and we actually saw the first segment of pipe in the ground, which was at Kingsman Road. We can certainly offer, I assume, another tour of the Willamette Water Supply Program and show the budget committee some new sites and programs and priorities that you will see during the budget process. We also visited the Ridgewood, excuse me, the Grabhorn Reservoir last year, the mossy roof, the rain coming down, and now a brand-new shiny reservoir is under construction by February, it'll be mostly done, so we'd like to show that, and I'm sure another array of projects. So I would just like consensus of the board to arrange another tour sometime in the early, late February, early March timeframe, is that of interest to the board for us to pursue?
I think a tour is a wonderful idea, and especially when we have a new budget committee member, which we do.
Okay, we will put that together, and the other, the remaining three dates are, or four dates are really a very similar process that we've done last year. We're proposing to hold two budget committee workshops with specific agenda items. The highlight of the first budget committee workshop, one of them will be to cover the water supply program budget, since that's a very significant item and a very high priority of the district. We're proposing to hold that workshop on March the 26, which is a Tuesday night. It might be spring break week for some, I don't know if that's going to be an issue. This is, would, do you want me to ask the board to, just double-checking if these dates are working, and if they're not, we can, we can certainly adjust, but I would like to inform the 10, the other members of the committee what dates we have in mind for these workshops.
They all work for me, and my children are 41, so spring break isn't an issue.
Yeah, I think I'm the only one with kids at that age. I will email you tomorrow and let you know what my family or what the head of the household is going to tell me I do.
And we do have some flexibility, we would like to have that workshop in March, I think it could be done the week before, is another option, so.
And I have a problem with the April 30 date.
Okay.
We'll be away from the 27th through May 4.
I didn't bring a calendar with me. You could try and hold it prior to the 27th?
That would be great, if you could.
Okay.
But all the others are fine.
Okay. The very important date for the budget committee is May 30, and that is the consideration of the proposed budget, we'll ask the full budget committee to conduct a public hearing, conduct deliberations on the budget, and make a recommendation on the budget to the full board, and the June 19 meeting is the regularly scheduled board meeting for that month. So what I'm hearing is looking at maybe an earlier date for the April 30 meeting, and possibly an earlier date for the March 26 meeting. Commissioner Sanders, we can check in tomorrow?
I'll check in with you tomorrow, thank you.
That'd be great.
Might offer the March 19, the Tuesday before, might work. I believe it, we'd have a regular board meeting the very next night, though.
Okay. Yeah, as a board, as we have, what we've done in the past is sort of alternated weeks, so you don't have two events on, two meetings on one week, if you're comfortable with that, we can certainly...
I'm just suggesting that if there is a problem with this.
Okay. Great. Great, thank you. So the other very brief update on the item is what we would plan to do, to do public outreach for the budget process. We'll work with Andrea and her communication team on outreach and planning efforts. In the past, we provided information on the budget process and schedule on the website. Because it's a two- or three-month process, we have the opportunity to post a lot of information on the websites, particularly as we go through each of these workshops and those presentation materials are made available on the webs, on the website. We've issued a general press release once we have these dates set, and somewhere close, very close to the, to the meetings themselves, probably in early March, we'll issue a press release. We'll take advantage of the social media tools that Andrea and her team have developed for the district, which include Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and Nextdoor. We will continue our outreach to our key customer program, who are, are large, some of our larger customers, and we have certain compliance requirements to advertise our meetings in, through local budget law. One, just ask the board if that's a satisfactory outreach process, or if there's other suggestions that you would like to see us consider to make sure that we are giving a good view of the budget process to anybody who might be interested.
I think that looks good.
And obviously, we can add as we go along, so. And that's all I had, I guess I'm looking forward to displaying the new district logo on some of the materials that we'll be providing throughout the budget process, and I certainly look forward to working with the board and the citizen members of the budget committee. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Todd. All right, there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners tonight, this meeting is adjourned.